Good evening and calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting. It is Wednesday, February the 19th. Charlotte, may you please call the roll?
Mr. Gagnon.
Here.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Meramon.
Here.
Mrs. Nazarella.
Present.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Mrs. Jagaloff.
Present.
Student Representative Sarah Granquist.
Here.
And Student Representative Alexis Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you, and Alexis, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, and now it is time for-
Madam Chairperson, may I request a revision to the agenda order?
Oh, okay.
I do have a member of my team that has fallen ill, so I was hopeful to request if the board would entertain a motion that one of you would make to postpone the enrollment projection report until our next meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vicina. So with the proposed recommendation to postpone the multi-year enrollment projection is until the next meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Discussion, again, the rationale for the suggestion was made, but any additional suggestions? All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Right, and with the updates to our agenda, we now shall proceed to public communications. And this is where we have an opportunity to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions. With this being the second meeting of the month, we are receiving comments on agenda items only. And for your awareness, today's agenda items include adoption of capital improvement plan for 2025-2026, accept revised policies 4080, 5110, 5360, 5370, 6320, 8355, proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year, accreditation of TA and student aides into West Hartford Board of Education paraprofessional contract, multi-year enrollment projections, personnel actions, and approval of minutes from February 4th Board of Education meeting. So a robust schedule this evening. And with the list that we have here, I just have one name on the list, so we'll begin with that individual, and that is John Lyons. Before coming to the podium, we'll ask for each individual to share their name, please, and you have three minutes to speak. We ask for you to be mindful of Charlotte, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time. And when your time is expired, you'll see a red card. We are attentively listening, and these directions are for everyone, not just you. We are attentively listening, however it is policy, that we do not respond to comments as they are being made.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. My name is John Lyons. I live at 21 Chestnut Hill Road here in West Hartford. While not the issue I came here to discuss, I just want to compliment and thank the entire Board of Education for their leading the efforts in restoring funding for the state transportation shortfall. You did it without incurring any West Hartford taxpayer expense and with full recognition of the extreme urgency of the issue. Thank you to the Chair. Thank you to the Superintendent's Office. Thank you to all of the members of the Board of Ed. Thank you Mayor Sherri Cantor and the Town Council and our West Hartford State delegation, who all realize the urgency. So if there are more people here, I'd ask for a round of applause, but congratulations. So, and really well done, thank you. I'm here to support, in support of the change in public comment policy, which you will be voting on tonight. I view one of the vital roles of the Board of Education as a potential last resort for a desperate teacher or a desperate student who sometimes does not know where else to go for help and needs to be afforded a platform to bring an important issue to the Board's attention. Taking action could ultimately help ease a substantial burden or even head off a crisis for one of West Hartford's smartest, our teachers, or one of West Hartford's brightest, our students. By broadening and encouraging public comment, it is a great step forward in the process. I have felt that the current policy was in many ways a reaction to outside forces that neither know West Hartford nor understand education in general, while sadly our wonderful and unpaid Board of Education volunteers have had to bear the brunt of some unfortunate and absolutely unmerited verbal attacks. As Merrill Wilson said, "It comes with the territory." Public comment must favor the voices of our teachers, our students, and their parents, and the new policy does just that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That is all who we have on the list, but we'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who cares to make a public comment. With that, we shall pause on public communications. And now proceeding to non-staff communications and reports. And this is where we're able to hear from our student representatives what's happening in their schools. And so let us begin with Sarah sharing what's going on at Hall.
We had a number of exciting events over the long weekend at Hall. On Monday, the Hall Boys hockey team won against Conner in overtime with a goal by Declan Stone. It was a very exciting game, from what I hear. On Friday, the Boys Indoor Track Team competed at the Class L Championships, and we had a number of relay medalists. Yesterday, the Girls Indoor Track Team competed at their Class L Championships, and we also had a number of medalists in a variety of events. Congratulations to all of our indoor track athletes, and we are very proud of how you represent Hall. On Friday night, at the Hall-Conner Boys Basketball Game, West Hartford Unified Sports had a halftime game. Over the past week, Hall's wrestling, boys basketball, and cheerleading teams had their senior nights where we celebrate our seniors for their dedication to Hall Athletics. Over in the music department, students continue to represent us well. The Concert Jazz Band competed at the prestigious Charles Mingus Competition and won first place. They were awarded Best Big Band and Outstanding Woodwind Section. Two CJB players, Chloe Majerik and Nathan Ben Arney, were awarded Outstanding Soloist Awards. We congratulate all of our Concert Jazz Band musicians and their incredible director. The famous Pops and Jazz Show is back, and tickets are now on sale at PNJ.Ludus.com. This Saturday, we have the Chocolate Cafe performance here at the Town Hall. This event is all sold out, and we are so excited to see everyone there to celebrate West Hartford music. The Career and Technical Department has brought a number of programs to Hall students during lunchbeves, featuring a visit from the Hospital for Special Care to talk about volunteer opportunities and Lake Compounds to share summer employment opportunities with students. This was a great program, and I know many of my classmates and I were able to gain information and access to career opportunities through these outreach events. Our past two community lessons have been in celebration of Black History Month. Over the past two weeks, we learned about influential Black people in America's history, and next week, there will be a panel discussion that all students will attend to learn more about Black History Month. Also, more generally in the community, there are multiple upcoming training events for teens at the library. On February 26th, there will be a teen QPR suicide prevention training, and on March 5th, a teen Narcan and opioid overdose response training.
Thank you, Sarah. Alexis, what's going on at Conner?
Conner continues to stay busy with the various events we have planned. We recently celebrated National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day on February 15th. Thank you to our Conner SROs for keeping us safe every day. Additionally, in order to honor our counselors as a part of National School Counseling Week, we encourage students to email their counselors and thank them all for their hard work, especially with their student support and college advice. They also organized the SAT Power Prep Academy, a five-week course held for Conner and Hall students to help prepare them for the SAT, which begins soon, sorry. At both Conner and Hall, students are exploring the theme African Americans and Labor throughout Black History Month. This theme highlights the vital contributions of Black workers, both voluntary and involuntary throughout American history, exploring the intersection of labor and the Black experience across various industries and movements. At Conner, we have been learning more about this theme during our community block and will, again, like Sarah said, listen to a panel discussion about this topic next week. Conner is hosting high school tours for families interested in seeing the building during the summer. Conner's Principal, Mrs. Tambora Linnoble, sent out an email with a link to a form to sign up. So make sure you check your email if you're interested. There will be various times to tour on July 8th, July 22nd, and August 11th. Conner's Science Club will be competing at the High School Northeast Science Bowl this Saturday at UConn after qualifying through local, regional, and state competitions. The Science Bowl at UConn will provide students with a venue to test their own knowledge and understanding of science, as well as provide demonstrations of various career opportunities throughout the day. We wish them good luck, sorry. The production of Disaster the Musical is still going strong as they have headed into their last month of rehearsals. Tickets are on sale right now at ConnerDrama.Ludus.com, and shows will take place during the first and second weekends of March. Go get your tickets to watch an amazing show filled with callbacks to the 70s. Chocolate Cafe will take place on February 22nd, right here at Town Hall, with one show during the afternoon and another show at night. Like Sarah said, while it is sold out, you can join the waitlist in order to catch a chance at seeing an outstanding performance from Solisi, Camerata, and Interel or KP's Bowstrings, depending on the show. For Conner Athletics, many winter sports have begun to wind down their seasons, celebrating various senior nights and preparing for the postseason. One of Conner's wrestling seniors, Braden Stone, hit 100 wins this season. Additionally, girls' basketball played yesterday in the first round of their CCC tournament, beating Bristol Eastern in order to advance to the second round of CCCs. We wish them good luck with the rest of their journey and are hoping for some hardware to bring home. After finishing their season with a huge win against Hall, boys' basketball will be focusing on preparing for the upcoming state tournament. With winter sports ending, we'd like to remind parents that registration for spring sports have opened, so don't forget to sign up your athlete for their respective sport. Lastly, as always, den discussions will be continuing in order to foster more conversations between our administration and students, allowing us to continue improving our school environment.
Thank you, Alexis. Boy, a lot is going on at your schools. Excellent, excellent, excellent. Thank you so much. And with that, we now shall move on to unfinished business, where we have adoption of the capital improvement plan for 2025-2026. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt the capital improvement plan for 2025-2026. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya. Discussion, so Mr. Palmer, so good to see you. And we'll, we know you've presented it to us before, and we had preliminary discussion conversation, and this is brought before us once again, but nonetheless, out of respect to you and Mr. Vicina, we'll pass the mic to you to share.
Thank you very much. So as you recall, back in December, we came and we presented the capital improvement program for the next two years. As you recall, for this budget, for the capital improvement process, the Board sends a recommendation to the Town Manager, which he includes in the Town's capital improvement program. So we're asking you to tonight is to review that and to approve that, and then we'll send it to the Town Manager. Happy to answer any questions regarding our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions? Again, this information was shared with us before, and lots of time to review, discuss, ask questions, and if there are any outstanding questions, please do share. As I swivel my head back and forth, I see none. So with that, with the motion on the floor, we shall proceed to vote. All of those in favor with approving the capital improvement plan for 2025-2026, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And as we continue to move along, we now should move on to new and revised policies as a second reading. We first have a motion by Lorna Thomas-Farkason, Jason Gagnon, and Gail Harris that the Board of Education accept as a second and final reading the following new and revised policies, which were reviewed by the Board Policy Subcommittee. They refer to Policy 4080-R, use of social media revised, 5110 confidentiality and access to education records revised, 5360 use of private technology devices by students, new, 5370 students' use of the district's computer systems and internet safety revised, 6320 weighted grading and calculation of grade point averages revised. And with the motion on the floor, rather, with the proposed motion on the floor, is there a motion to accept these as a second reading?
So moved.
Thank you. Shannon, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gail. Discussion. So again, we've had these brought before us before and have reviewed, and Dr. Morrow is not here. I'm looking at the table, but you know.
Actually, I can cue this up for you a little bit if you'd like. Dr. Morrow is among my folks who have just fallen ill, so apologies for his absence. He certainly wishes he could be here. But I would point out quickly, the use of social media, Policy 4080, which you can find in your board book on page 7, that's essentially a rewrite of the policy. It's very, you could see that the old policy was kind of stricken, struck out, and there's a very short new policy that just kind of comes up to date with social media practice. The confidentiality and access to educational records revised policy, beginning on page 10, that has very minimal updates. I just think it's some wordsmithing, some language changes, replacing things like school system with district. There didn't seem to be a dramatic amount substantial in that. The 5360, use of private technology devices by students, that's an entirely new policy, and it's in recognition of the fact that students certainly may bring their own device into a school, but they would be accessing school networks, and essentially that all the typical school rules would still apply to include, you know, things such as, you know, the potential need to search a device in the cause of an investigation or something to that effect, despite the fact that it's not a school device if that were the need. And then lastly, 6320, weighted grading of calculation of grade point averages, that's simply revised with the primary change being in addition to account for the common means by which the state of Connecticut calculates grade point average for the automatic acceptance program in community colleges. So just an awareness of what that system is, but then in terms of the grade point average that we calculate, we would continue to follow our rules. So that's just an overview, and if there are specific questions, either the Subcommittee or certainly I could try to assist in any way.
Thank you. Yes, Gail.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions on the policy with access to educational records. So one of my questions was regarding a student who's 18 in the system, whether that student, because they, I guess, are legally an adult at 18, would have the right to limit who can access the record.
Is that, are you asking if that's inclusive in the policy or just in general? My understanding from my days at the high school were typically that, unless a student has been emancipated, if they're still living with their parents, despite the fact of their legal status for voting and such, that other rights don't necessarily automatically transfer under school. But that's a fast answer. I can get you a better answer if there's a page reference that you want me to look at specifically.
It was more of a general question.
Okay. That's my understanding, that they would need to be emancipated.
Okay. I also had one other question. Why don't you go, because I can't remember what it was. I'm trying to find it.
This is probably just nitpicking. Policy 4080-R, use of social media is basically about employees. Doesn't say that, though. So initially, when I read it, I just assumed it was everybody. Whereas when you do, and I realize this is set up by the law firm, Policy 5360 actually specifies student, you know, private technology devices by students. So I-
That's a good observation. I'm going to need to look at the numbering system, but my recall is that the 4,000 series, that's all specific to staff. So all of those policies are designed specifically for staff, and then everything under the 5,000 series would relate to students, which would be the explanation as to why 4080 is narrow.
No, I don't have a problem with being narrow.
Okay.
I just figured, should say employees' use or use of social media by employees. I don't know.
If-
If you can run it by-
Yeah, if that's a change that the Board is in favor of, I don't, you know, it's-
Well, it's just me, but I can't speak for others.
Well, if I, if I may, I respect, receive the question. As Mr. Vicina was sharing, it is listed under personnel series 4,000, so personnel in and of itself presumes talking about staff. So your question is in terms of adding a word or?
Yeah.
So-
Two words.
So let me ask this, then. Is it, with that, so let me, I'll pause with a comment with that. Okay. And please continue with your questions.
That was my question. It's just, to me, it's a little inside baseball that, you knew, but-
Understood. No, I think it's a de minimis change that we could pen and ink in if you all were in favor of it, really. We could make it employee use of social media, but-
So what I'm trying to pause and process to see is if we need to amend the motion to when it comes time to voting, that it reflects the additions that will be made? Or are you proposing to hold off on voting until said suggestions are made? Which, I'm hoping you're not, per se, but nonetheless, want to respect what you are suggesting.
If others are in agreement with me, let's do it. If not, then it is what it is.
With doing what? Oh, in terms of the word?
Just adding use of social media by employees.
Okay.
Where do you want to change? Can you share the title?
The title. Just the title.
What page?
What do you want to change this time?
Use of social media by employees. I feel like it's created a firestorm in this.
No. So, right, right. So it does, if, is it fair to say it's not a substantive change or added you're making? It's just more, as colleagues said, contextual?
More informational.
Okay. And so with that, unless there are any objections from colleagues, as we continue to process, we still will be able to proceed with voting with that piece. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It was small.
That's, no, that's what this is for, thank you. Any other questions or suggestions? Gail, yes. But Ethan, your mic.
Thank you. Going back to the same policy with the confidentiality. I had a question also, and I understand if, you know, you don't have the information right now, but my question is, there's, you know, a lot of discussion in here about allowing people to have access to student information that are doing research or educational research, and that the student information would be blinded with some kind of code. So, and then there's information also about consultants and contractors having that information as well. And it, just curious of a couple of different things. One is, do parents have, do they have the right to or do they need to consent to students' information being given to outside researchers? I can tell you in the medical field, even if you're blinded, you have to still consent. So I'm curious if there has to be some kind of consent process. And then if you have an outside consultant, you know, working in the school, do they have access to student records? Or is that something that has to be consented to?
Great question, so thank you for that. So first and foremost, you know, the whole confidentiality access to public records has to do, you know, very broad, very important policy, you know, that relates to, you know, FERPA and other pieces. Relative to your very specific question about research. So as a district, the first thing I would want to mention is that we are very cautious and very infrequently engage in educational research as it would relate to specific student records or anything like that. That is not anything that happens with any, with any common occurrence at all. However, it is important that, should it happen, that there be a policy in place that you have all consented to, agreed upon, and understand, which is what is here in print. But to that point, then, when students are involved, yes, we do have an informed consent by the parent regarding any participation by a student in such research. There would not be a time where any, you know, you, parents would always have the ability, if we had agreed, hey, there's something happening, and it is of some importance, and we do think it's worthwhile, we would send notification home to parents, and we would be looking for signed consent or the opportunity for them to otherwise opt out of any such thing. In terms of the consultancy, again, I think this is a policy that is attempting to forecast any, any, any types of occurrences that might, you know, might happen. It's obviously informed by shipment in Goodwin, so they've kind of looked at this, and they've got the benefit of working with districts across the state, and they try to, you know, put everything in that a board might need. I am not thinking of an occurrence where there would be an outside consultant, where something like that would happen, but I think there's the potential, like, there must be, there must have been situations where you'd want to have a policy resting in place should that need arise. But, you know, in terms of giving you a better, more comprehensive answer, I might kind of need to go back to the farm and think about that.
I mean, I don't, and I don't know if it needs to go in here. If you- I mean, I don't, and I don't know if it needs to go in here, if you are getting consent from parents, but I don't think the policy actually says that, you know, because there is a whole thing in here about research, you know, says that parents will need to give consent for records to be sent out for research. So I don't know if that's something that should be in there or if it's someplace else that would take care of it.
Restate your question. I apologize. I missed it.
I'm saying that, you're saying that if the, if you did do research, which I understand is a rare occurrence, but if it were to happen, the parents would have to give consent for records to be sent out. I think that's what you said.
Yeah, generally, if, if there's going to be something that needs to look at individualized data, then parents would give consent for their students to be participating in that. There have been other research projects, again, infrequently, where if there's some summary data that someone's looking at to try to make some conclusions, that's not involved with individual students, and students don't need to produce any work, they don't need to do anything. That's a, that's a different, that's a different piece. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Sure.
I think it would also have the interplay with FERPA. So I think that's where you would get the protections that you're looking for, Gail. So, and this does cite that, especially on page 30, it talks about the interplay with FERPA. And then to your earlier question, I believe eligible student is defined on page 12, which would be, it reads, is a student or former student who has reached the age of 18 years of age or is an emancipated minor.
All right. Does, well, I think Paul answered that, but I just don't know how that entirely answers the question of whether an 18-year-old could decline having parents viewing records, or maybe it does.
I think there's, you know, there's a legal challenge that a student might invoke, but it's been our, you know, it's been our general practice that if you're not emancipated, it would be unusual to be living under the same roof and refuse your parents to allow it, and I think that would come with its own set of legal tests.
Then I have one last question, if somebody else has. My last question was about the HIV-related information in here, and I was just curious as to why there's, you know, lots and lots of information regarding HIV and no other, you know, disease that is in here.
Legal precedents and requirements, I'm sure it was, I don't have the specific legal reference. I know there are a number of them at the end of the policy, but which one connects specifically to that? But it's not chosen over any other medical issue, you know, by our own desires, simply based on legal precedents and legal cases to inform policies that are common throughout the state.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume we wouldn't discuss any medical issue, but it seems like they talked a lot about that particular one. Okay, that was all my questions.
Any other questions? So what I will do, I will go through each individual one for us to vote, just because we know we do have one added, two words to add to one specific policy. So beginning with 4080-R, use of media, however, including by staff at the end. So again, 4080, well, let me pause. Any other discussion or comments, or is it okay to proceed to a vote? All right. So with 4080-R, use of social media revised, but adding by staff. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. 5110, confidentiality and access to education records revised. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. 5360, use of private technology devices by students, new. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. 5370, student use of the district's computer systems and internet safety revised. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. 6320, weighted grading and calculation of grade point averages revised. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. All right. Now moving on to a second motion by Jason Gagnon and Gail Harris, that the board accept as a second and final reading the following revised policy, which was revised by the Board Policy Subcommittee, referring to policy 8355, meeting conduct, public comment revised. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gail. Discussion. So again, like the previous ones, this was brought before us. We had discussion at that time, and this also is a time for discussion of this proposed motion. And so opening it to the floor to hear your thoughts. And I will give a heads up with this one, because we had robust discussion before. We'll ask for a roll call vote when it comes time to voting on this policy. But thoughts or comments regarding policy 8355? Jason?
I'll take off from your point of robust conversation, and what I've been thinking a lot about with this policy is good faith and good intent. And I know it might not be in vogue these days to look at public servants and the discourse of public servants, to look at them and think that when they disagree, they disagree on the basis of good faith and good intent. But I think that's exactly what we have on this board, is that people of good faith and good intent who simply disagree on the existing policy. And having served over the last little bit more than a year now, I think I've gotten to know each of you enough to know that wherever you fall on this issue, you come to this from a place of wanting to do what's best for our students, what's best for the community, what's best for the people who serve our school. And so I think everybody, you know, on this board knows that. I think everybody out in the community should know that. I also know, too, that the existing policy was not some kind of effort to squash speech, but rather to promote efficiency. And I think the fact that we have that robust debate is healthy. I think that we've been able to do so in a respectful and collegial way, should be a source of pride, and I hope it also serves as a model for the times ahead. There's an expression in the law that bad facts make bad law. The, this policy arose, the existing policy arose out of a difficult and unique set of times, a bad set of facts for a policy that was meant to govern more broadly. The proposed policy that we're voting on tonight is designed to simplify that policy and to make access to public comment easier for the residents of West Hartford. As I noted during the first, the first reading, it takes courage to come to a Board of Ed meeting, to speak to this board, to know you're on, you know, TV, and often on very sensitive topics. And it's difficult, not only in terms of that courage that it takes to do that, but it's difficult logistically. You know, I talked about, you know, the hoops that I sometimes have to juggle to get to this meeting, right? Is it swim practice? Is it baseball practice? It's probably both, and my poor wife has to take the brunt of that. But the people who come to speak to us face that same challenge every day that they come. It's, you know, who's going to get, pick up the kids? How are they going to get to their sports or their after-school activity? Who's got dinner covered? Okay, can we arrange for, you know, childcare? And then to show up and to be told that, I'm sorry, you got the wrong day, I just think, is unfair to them. And I think to the extent that there's a burden between, you know, having a more efficient meeting and letting people have that more open access, again, I think that burden should fall on us. I also think that it's a policy, the proposed policy is one that I think would help some of the more marginalized communities within West Hartford. I mean, the chair spoke today about there being 70 different languages spoken in West Hartford. You know, some of these people who come to speak to us take that added, you know, leap of courage that English is, may not be their first language. They, you know, they may be the first to be here and be American citizens, and to come again and stand before us and speak and to be told, you know, sorry, you missed what meeting it was, I think is unfair to them. It's also designed to ensure that, and I know this was never the intent of the policy, but we have had speakers come on the wrong day, on a day when they're not, you know, entitled to speak on an agenda item. And we have voted to make exceptions on certain occasions. And I think we all agree that there are occasions when there should be exceptions, some more than others. The problem is, as soon as we start doing that, we put the board in an unfair position of having to decide who gets to speak, on what topics do we allow an exception. And I don't think that's the proper role of the board. And so what I believe is before the board, and again, I know that was never the intent, but there are unintended consequences to, I think, trying to do the right thing in allowing certain people to speak. I just think that a simpler policy that opts for more open access is the way to go. And so I believe that this is the right policy for the community, and though I'm sure others will adamantly disagree with me, I think it's the best policy for the board. Again, in striking the balance between efficiency and more open access, fewer barriers, I'm going to be on the side of open access. And I do recognize that there are, in fact, other ways to reach the Board of Education, but I think there's a significant qualitative difference between an email and looking us in the eye and telling us something that someone thinks we need to hear.
Thank you. Other thoughts or comments regarding the proposed policy change or policy on the floor, which is proposing a change? Latoya?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jason. So, yeah. Hey, everyone. So I want to take a moment to acknowledge the importance of public engagement and our work as the board, and we all value transparency, accountability, and community input. However, I must express my deep concern about the proposed change to our public comment policy. As a Black woman and a dedicated member of this board, I have personally experienced the weight of the challenges that led to the current policy. It's not just a procedural discussion for me. It's about ensuring that all board members, especially those from underrepresented backgrounds, can serve in an environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to progress. The decision to structure public comment in its current form wasn't made lightly. And I say that because, you know, initially, when we first started talking about it, I was like, yeah, like, maybe we should, but then I went back and did my homework. I went back and I watched those meetings. I read the articles. I read comments of board members that are sitting at this table, and I got a deep understanding of why that change was made. And so I just wanted to add that. And it really was a response to a reality that many of the town witnessed firsthand, and in reality, where meetings became unmanageable and where dialogue was often overshadowed by hostility, and where board members, particularly those from marginalized communities, were subjected to targeted attacks. And we can't ignore the historical context in which these issues arose. We saw education become a battleground in the last presidential administration, and I'm not talking about the last one, but the one before that. We know, we know which one I'm talking about, the one we're currently in, again, and particularly around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And as a town, we're still working toward a board that is truly representative of the diverse voices in our community. Yet, right now, only two people of color sit on this board. To revert to a policy that previously enabled toxic discourse would be a step backward and could once again put colleagues, especially those in the minority, at risk of undue harm. The current policy has protected me once. There was a meeting where someone from the public came to speak on a night that was agenda items only, and they got up to the podium and they started to personally attack me, and it was racially charged. And because of the current policy, I was protected from that, and that person was not allowed to continue speaking. This is not about limiting voices. Again, as a Black woman in this country, I know firsthand what it's like to have your voice limited, to feel unheard and unseen, and so I would never dare to put the public in that position. It's about ensuring that public engagement is constructive and that this board can effectively carry out the business of serving students, educators, and families. The current policy aligns with structures used by many other boards across the state, where they have one meeting a month and they allow public comment. We have two meetings a month. We're giving two opportunities for our public to engage with us. It still allows for robust public participation while also respecting our time and our capacity, and most importantly, the dignity of those who we serve. And I feel like there are so many other things we can prioritize that directly impact our students, and especially right now. I urge my colleagues to consider what this change would mean, not just in policy, but in practice. We must ask ourselves who benefits from this change and at what cost. We have an obligation to foster an environment where all members feel safe to lead and where our work remains focused on the students' success. And so I also want to say, I respect all of my colleagues here at the table and understand we don't always have to agree on everything. And I also want to offer that if this policy change does go forward, I don't know who's going to be here next year, but if this policy, this policy change goes forward, I really hope that I can trust my colleagues to stand by my side, shoulder to shoulder, with me if those personal attacks do come and be, and show that allyship in real time, because that's the only way we're going to continue to diversify this board. If we want the board to look like the community, then those diverse community members need to see people who look like them serving here and also being protected and defended. So for these reasons, I have to stand firmly in my support of keeping the current policy in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or thoughts regarding the motion on the floor? Ethan?
Okay. So in the spirit of transparency, I was against the change when it was changed several years ago. And I believe that we have seen more confrontations and conflicts, especially given the number of speakers we've had, than we had before the change was made. And I think it puts the chairman, or chairwoman, in an unfair position where she has to determine what's the agenda and what's not the agenda, particularly because the decision process happens when the person's already speaking. So we've had a number of those, and it's caused more conflict than I think it should. We've had one parent who showed up, had hired a babysitter, which was expensive for her to do, only to be told she couldn't speak. We overrode that decision, but it put, you know, the parent doesn't know, as Jason said. There have been multiple times when the board has voted to allow speakers to speak just because of the timing of what they were saying relative to an incident in the school or what was going on in the Middle East. We've had parents want to speak about a request for their daughter, only to be turned down, then to get their emails saying they needed a decision by the board, which probably wouldn't have happened, but we didn't even get in the decision process till it was too late for the student to make, have a change. I believe it's important to hear from all the public, and frankly, given the political outlook of the town, it's going to be more negatives than, to me, than positives, but that is democracy. So I'd like to hear from as many as possible, and I think specifying first meeting, second meeting, if we only have one meeting per month, then I would vote for one speech or one public comment per month, but we have two. I think we should take advantage of it, and it follows New England has a tradition of letting the public come and speak. I think we should honor that. So I vote to the change, and I appreciate it being made or being requested.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Gail?
Yeah. I just wanted to, first of all, I wanted to thank my colleague, Jason, for speaking so eloquently about why we do need to have this change. I'm not going to reiterate all the points that he made, but he said it quite well and quite eloquently. And I think that the crux of the matter is that we need to allow people to speak. We need, we are here to serve the public. We don't need to make it complicated, and the policy that we have currently is complicated, as we've all seen, with too much friction, hostility, putting our chairperson in the uncomfortable position of having to decide what is and what isn't an agenda item sometimes, and, you know, then having to decide... and, you know, then having to decide if we're going to allow someone to speak or not allow someone to speak. So I entirely support this change in the policy as it's written, and I also want to commend Jason for writing the policy, which is not something that typically happens. Most of our policies are not written by the board, but Jason, being as eloquent as he is, was able to write this policy and make it just simply simpler and easier to adhere to. So I just wanted to mention that and thank him for all his hard work on this.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, Claire?
So I will be voting against the policy change. The intent behind the policy and making the change was never about silencing, and I resent that that has been made public, that we were trying to silence. The revision was about adding structured and focused attention once a month on the agenda. At the time we made the change, we had 154 speakers in that one year compared to an average of 37 speakers for the past four years before that. There is a very organized national website established to promote conservative and discriminatory education agenda. It is actively operating in our district. The online instructions and encouragement for writing and presenting to Board of Eds as well as submitting Freedom of Information requests has directly impacted districts in Connecticut. With the existing policy, exceptions mid-month were allowed after our board vote. No one individually made that decision. My vote was never based on who was worthy, which was also stated by a board member, but on what two topics that were dramatically affecting residents. In two years, we've had two residents come to the podium to speak against the policy or write about the policy change. Unlike some of my colleagues, I believe West Hartford residents are able to understand and follow this policy. Open forum meetings, the first meeting of the month, allows the public to come with any concern before and after the meeting. This far exceeds districts in our state. I believe it is a mistake to change the policy, and I will be voting no.
Thank you. Other?
Shannon? So I don't have a lot to add to what has already been conveyed by some of my colleagues. I will be voting in favor of the change to this policy purely from the vantage point of simplicity and trying to make things as clear and straightforward as possible for the residents of West Hartford and trying to understand when they can communicate about a particular issue. And I myself have found it confusing and difficult to explain to others what meeting of the month is the right meeting to come to, and so therefore, I would like to remove that complexity as possible. I do want to mention, though, that I in no way want to dismiss or discount the concerns that have been raised by those who are not voting in favor of this change. And I believe that we need to solve, we're trying to solve for a different problem. And fundamentally, I think that we need to focus on the line that was there from the beginning in the policy, which says that no person shall interrupt a meeting or render the orderly conduct of such meeting unfeasible, and the chairperson may order any individual who engages in such conduct removed. Obviously, an extreme example, but I think that we need to, as a board, be in a position to address instances of incivility and disrespect in that moment, and this policy doesn't solve for that. The old policy that we're looking to change, there's still an opportunity for people to be disrespectful regardless of whether it's an agenda item or a non-agenda item. And what we need to do is be really on our game to address that in the moment, which is hard to do. I will be the first to admit confrontation is difficult, but we need strategies and ability to kind of take that situation in its context and make sure that we are staying focused on the protocol of this board and how we want public comment to be a model to our young people and handle those situations on a case-by-case basis. I very much believe that we can do that effectively as a board. It will take, you know, practice and skill and patience, but that would be the way that I would like to proceed going forward, come what may. And with that, I will just say that I'll be voting in favor of changing this policy.
All right. So everyone has shared their thoughts, and I will share mine. And I appreciate and respect the comments and thoughts that each and every one of you have shared. I will say, from the start, and as I have shared from the start, the last time we conversed, I am also on the policy subcommittee, and I am a minority in that. I'm not talking in terms of ethnicity. I'm talking in terms of the viewpoints of this proposed policy, where I am not in favor. And just to elaborate as to why, not to repeat so much what I said before, but I do want to clarify the chronology of events from then until now, because I certainly also do believe in recognizing facts, and I want to make sure that we are all looking at facts in the same way. So we know that from the policy that was in place for some decades, there was an initial modification to that policy. And those of us who were on the board at the time and on the policy subcommittee unanimously were in support of that. I'm looking at you, Gail, as well, because we were in favor of the initial change that was made, where it prioritized speaking on agenda items first, followed by non-agenda items. And then we did make a second change that was voted on in June of 2022, and so our first meeting in September of 2022 is where it was put into effect. And we know anecdotally, persons have referenced times where, three particular times where we did vote to suspend the policy to allow for persons to speak on evenings that were intended for agenda items only. Will remind us all, those that are currently on the board as well as those who are, were not, that at the time when we were making voting and having discussion for the initial policy change, there was discussion that acknowledged there may be times when we may have to suspend the rules and how the policy will allow for that. And so fast forward to September 2022 into October, there were unfortunately three instances where we did have to apply that. We also know from September until October, November, there were a couple of moments, one in particular, where we did have someone to come to speak on a non-agenda evening, and when reminded that we're speaking on agenda items only, they expressed their disappointment with that and commented on the challenge of that and wished they had have known beforehand that that evening was only for agenda items. And the person, although disgruntled, did sit down, did remove from the podium. But what was said, as we say, we may not comment, when public comment is being made, we do make note, and we appreciated hearing that, because what we did do is we went back and intentionally modified the boilerplate language in the agenda, where it did specify that the first meeting of the month is for agenda and non-agenda items, and we also have a boilerplate when we meet the second meeting of the month that specifies we're receiving comments on agenda items only. Since we have made that change, I don't recall having repeated instances as we did before. Matter of fact, come the beginning of this academic school year, we have not had challenges with respect to persons stating they did not know or they were not aware. Now, I'm saying we do not have challenges with a smile, only because we know we have had persons that may have inserted non-agenda items on agenda items only, and yes, I would interject and remind them of the agenda items. Now, I appreciate my colleagues saying with respect to the chair's role and how that is a challenge and this. I respect the empathy for that. However, I receive the challenge, because that is what we are entitled and supposed to do as a board member and as a chair. And so if that means upholding the policies that stand, even if that means having to do so with some assertiveness, that is what has to happen. And so since we have had the beginning of this school year, can only think of one time where that assertively had to be applied. As a colleague also mentioned, we have received one, maybe two, feedback from the public with respect to the policy change. I'm saying all of this to say, because as colleagues have made reference to the events over the past year, plus, it has spoken as if we've had ongoing challenges, ongoing rebukes by person, ongoing senses of confusion, and that is not, is not the case. I also say this knowing I'm in the minority with the vote this evening, so the proposed changes will likely go forward. However, I do think it's important to stand on principle and ensure that all voices are heard and we are speaking on facts. I also do want to say that one specific time when we did have a moment where a person had to be reminded of speaking on agenda items, having to assert and be reminded of the policy and what rules were in place, I also don't want to have it to seem as though in those moments of difficulty, what would be easier or to simplify is if that policy was not in place, if it weren't evening where any comment can be spoken on. I know that I'm not in favor of that perception, because it's almost as if to say if a child is not happy about going to bed at 8:30, well, let's extend their bedtime to 10 o'clock. And I'm not, I think it's important when there are rules in place and when there's a policy in place for adults to respect that, and there's a proper time and a place to speak their disagreements on that. And again, serving as chair, there are moments when you do have to assert yourself for the order and the better good of the board and the efficiency of the board. Now, one specific piece in terms of the proposed language change, again, the way the current policy is, we receive comments on any item, the beginning of the month. The second meeting of the month, agenda items only. That's it. We still have two board meetings a month. We still have public comment at the beginning of each meeting, public comment at the end of each meeting. That's an average of four public comments per month. The first meeting of the month, you can speak on any item. The second meeting of the month, we're asking for you to please speak only on agenda items. And I've already listed what the agenda items are for this evening, so we see how there are many times it can be rather lengthy. And so I just want to be clear that what we are voting on is recommending for those bookends not to be there for the means at which how many people can speak, in particular at the end of the meeting, the way the proposed language is written, it's giving no boundaries in terms of how many people can speak on agenda or non-agenda items. And so respecting moments where we can agree to disagree, want to ensure we are doing so with the correct facts and the chronology of events as they have transpired. And so with that, everyone has spoken, and so we now shall proceed to a vote, a roll call vote, please. Charlotte?
Mr. Gagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldman?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Maraman?
Yes.
Mrs. Nezarella?
No.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson?
No.
Mrs. Jageloff?
No.
The motion passes. And so with this new policy change, we will have the language updated, and it will take effect for our, well, our next meeting is the first meeting of the month anyway, so it would have been agenda, non-agenda, but moving forward, it will apply to those meetings. And so with that, we now shall move on to new business, where we have proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year as a first reading, seeking a motion that the Board of Education review as a first reading the proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya. Discussion, and we pass it to Superintendent Vicinus.
Thank you very much. So I will direct you to page 51, where you can see the proposed school calendar for the 2026-2027 school year. Just a reminder that we typically will publish calendars two years out to allow for adequate planning for families, any travel that might be associated, and things of that nature. And we follow a pretty standard practice with our school calendars that I imagine you've grown accustomed to in terms of starting school. That last week in August kind of helps to generally lead the kids into three school days, followed by four school days, followed by five school days, but some differences this year, perhaps with the layout of the different holidays. We are in common in general with other districts in and around the surrounding areas, but as a board, you have the ability to make any individualized adjustments you would like. The only thing I wanted to point out, any difference, say, to this proposed calendar from the current year or perhaps even next year, two things which really just have to do with where holidays fall. So as you know, we have, frequently have the Jewish holidays off, and the holiday of Rosh Hashanah during this particular period is going to fall on September the 13th, which is a Saturday, so it... Is it over the weekend? So, okay, so it's okay. In other words, yeah, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. The evening of the 11th, the Friday evening of the 11th through to that. And then likewise, Diwali, I know we've had Diwali off, but when we first, when we first put Diwali onto the calendar, it also fell on a weekend, and it will again fall on a weekend during November, I believe, November 8th, and so it is not listed as a holiday here for the school year calendar, because it will not fall on a school day. However, we will not lose sight of the fact of either of these important religious observances, and we will be certain to incorporate them, as we have in other years, when we've had a religious observance fall on a weekend or an otherwise non-school day. So pending any questions on this calendar, I submit it to you for a first reading.
Thank you. Any questions, observations? Yes, Gail?
I just was wondering why Juneteenth is on the calendar if it's beyond the school year?
Yeah, so we have included it typically just for summer school purposes. We will sometimes get questions. We've had several questions this year from members of the public. Hey, are you going to be holding summer school or anything on Juneteenth? And we tell them no, and we've told them in the past we hadn't designated it because it wasn't part of a school day, but it is useful. It has come up in the past where we've had extended snow days to where it kind of crept up onto the observance of Juneteenth, so having a formal recognition that should there need to be regular school if we had that many snow days, or just for the purposes of transparency for any summer school, to put it onto the June calendar.
I'm just curious, some, why like something like July 4th wouldn't be on there, because wouldn't that hit?
Yeah, we just don't have July on the calendar at all.
Claire? In a calendar such as this, is the extended school year start date not determined at this time?
Correct. Not determined. So we're typically utilizing this calendar, the extended school year, the summer school dates, all of those things are determined once we know exactly how many snow days we're going to have.
Any other questions or comments regarding the proposed calendar? All right. Again, this is a first reading, so the next time it comes before us, we will vote. However, if you do have any suggested edits or anything along those lines, please do share them with Mr. Vicinus, so they can be applied accordingly. And now moving on to accretion of teaching assistants and student aides into portions of the West Hartford Board of Education Paraprofessionals Contract. And so with that, we will seek a motion that the Board of Education ratify the negotiated agreements between the West Hartford Board of Education Paraprofessionals and the Board of Education for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jason. Discussion. So hello, Mr. Julio Duarte. We'll pass it to you.
Great, thank you. So good evening, everyone. Presented for your approval tonight is a ratified agreement between the Board of Education and the West Hartford Board of Education Paraprofessionals Union, located on page 52 of your board packet. This negotiated agreement formally incorporates teaching assistants and student aides into portions of the West Hartford Board of Education Paraprofessionals Contract. This group of approximately 150 dedicated staff members plays an important roles in our schools, stepping in whenever needed. They work across various settings, contributing to a positive and inclusive learning environment, whether covering classes in a teacher's absence or supporting students with special educations needs. They collaborate with staff and administrations to ensure the smooth operation, daily operations and activities, and enhance student learning. This agreement was ratified on January 21st, which it recognizes, again, the West Hartford Board of Education Paraprofessionals Union as the exclusive representation for teaching assistant and student aides who work 25 hours or more a week. It also defines a specific sections of this contract that will apply to our teaching assistants and student aides. It establishes a general wage increase of $5, an additional $5 per day for the 2024 school year. for the 2024 school year and an additional $4 on top of that for the 25-26 school year. It also aligns with Public Act 248, providing three sick days effective January 1, 2025, and then six sick days effective July 1, 2026. It also grants a $500 attendance bonus for any teaching assistant or student aide who works at least 82 school days per semester. And with 91 school days in a semester, essentially that means that they've had 90% attendance or more. And it also ensures that all teaching assistants and student aides receive priority consideration over external applicants for full-time paraprofessional openings. So this summarizes the agreement. As always, I did want to take a moment to thank all of our teaching assistants and student aides for the dedication, flexibility and support they provide to our students, teachers and school community every day. I said "we," but I would be happy to answer any question that the board may have.
Thank you very much. I see Latoya's hand and then Ethan's hand and then Claire's hand.
So I don't have any questions, but just wanted to say this is awesome. And thinking about my own journey as an educator, I came up from the bottom in that way. You know, I was the crossing guard and then I was the lunch and recess staff and then I was a para and then I was a tutor and a teacher. And so recognizing that hard work that that staff puts in and really holding the school culture. And so I just, I love to see this. I also am hoping too that it can be a model for other districts. I get to travel all around the state and work with different districts. And this is a particular population in our school that feels underappreciated and unseen and, you know, not fairly compensated. And so I love to see, you know, what we're doing here and also just continuing to move that equity needle, like, right? We're like doing it and I love it. And so I just wanted to commend our district on this. I think it's wonderful. And I think it really will increase that pipeline for paras moving into and teaching assistants moving into those teacher roles and school leader roles. And that's what we want to see here. So thank you so much to everyone for all of the hard work and I'm just excited about this.
Ethan?
Question for you. The agenda items is accretion of teaching assistants. Accretion is defined as?
So essentially, if previously the teaching assistants and our student aides were non-union members. So essentially what that word means is they're joining portions of the para contract.
And they voted for this?
Correct.
Okay. The, just to get context, is it possible, at least in the future, even if you have it now? How much is this? Because, and also is teachers, is the, student aides are a line? I realize I'm looking at the last month's budget and you all aren't. But does student aides go under teacher assistants or does that have to wait for Liz?
So essentially, we used to have teaching assistants and we had, they were formerly called para subs. So we've changed that name to student aides. I think more accurately represents the work that they do every day. But that is a line item that I believe...
So going into paraprofessional?
So I think is that how she's probably coded it? Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I'm looking at it and you're not, so.
Yeah, yeah, no. And I should have started off by just thanking both Liz and Andy for their support in these negotiations. As they did take some time to get to this point, we are also excited about it. But I appreciate their support throughout that process.
And do you have an estimate of how much this was going to cost?
I know that Liz does and I can certainly have her get that. And we did have that. I just don't want to give you an inaccurate number off the top of my head.
It's just given the conversation two weeks ago.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think about 150 total. So it's essentially taking the line item that you're probably looking at, Ethan, and adding, you know, $5 a day what that would come out to for all of those folks.
380 days?
Yeah, and you know, one of the other pieces too is that they are essentially compensated only for days that they work. So when they're not at work, they're actually not compensated previously.
I don't have any problem with that. My problem is we're voting on something. I don't know how much it is. So it's my concern. So, all right, thank you. Is it possible in the future to just try and dollarize it?
Sure, and I promise you if Liz was here, she would give you that answer. I apologize for not having that for you.
I understand. Thank you.
I just wanted her to know how valuable of a member of the team she is.
I approve. I already know that.
Yeah, I expected around just over $100,000 total.
I just, I'm still up. I just think as a board, we should be dealing with the actual amount and staying there because otherwise there's no context.
Yeah, I'd feel comfortable telling you that it's between 100 to 300 for the two-year, the duration of the entire two-year contract.
Okay, that's sort of where I assume, but I'd just like to know. But for future too.
Understood.
Thank you.
Claire?
Bravo. This is, this is well, a great move. These individuals are so essential in so many classes and to so many students. There is a shortage right now. We need to recruit as many as possible and keep the high quality. So I'm very happy to see this change. The, so they will be full voting members then of the para union?
They are, correct. Again, you know, there's only certain portions of the contract that we've accepted, but essentially they're the key components for them. And many of them have already joined, I believe, the union as we've gone through this process. And I know that in speaking to them, they're very, very pleased with this.
And do they have healthcare?
So they do not. So that is the big difference between essentially these roles and our paraprofessionals. And so that was one of the things that we were really excited to put in here too was that last talking point, that essentially they'll get priority in any openings that we have for para positions. And so, you know, in theory, when we have a para opening, they'll be the first folks that we're hoping apply. And certainly if they're qualified for, we'd want to give them the priority for that. So again, it's been a conversation. Many of them actually, you know, have different insurances in different ways. So it's not necessarily their sell, but we recognize for those folks that want and need the insurance, we want to make a priority for them to be able to get into that para bargaining unit that does have the, you know, the benefits with it.
And do they currently do goal setting in mid-year meetings with administrators?
So they currently do it, but not as formal of a process. It's one of the things that we have incorporated into this is actually having a, you know, essentially in our review process so that we can formalize that a bit more. And I think that also helps us, you know, just add a little bit more weight to the positions and have those good conversations with administrators. And, you know, some of it is not necessarily just about the goal setting in my mind. It's more about hearing what are their career aspirations, right? And sitting down and, you know, and talking about the person who tells me, yeah, I really want to be a teacher someday. Oh, I didn't know that. That's great. Here's some pathways to get there. You know, we've talked about our future educators with diversity and we see this as a pathway where folks could come in here, get a, you know, move on to a para role perhaps or even go to that and really get them in the classroom. So we've started to do some of that, but that was really, you know, the reason why I was excited for the evaluation model. It wasn't that they're, you know, needing necessarily the feedback on the work. It's more about just providing time for folks to have a good, rich conversation about what is it that you want from the district too.
Yeah, and would you, I don't need specific data, but would you say this 150 staff is a more diverse group than our teachers or our current para educators?
Yeah, I'd say that's a fair statement.
Okay. It's very important that they have a voice, you know, they're dedicated and they, we want them to stay. We want to give them opportunities to grow and become teachers, maybe join the student residency program. So thank you very much for presenting.
Other que, Gail?
Thank you. I just had a question regarding the, I know this isn't exactly what you're talking about. What is the accreditation for like a teaching assistant? Is that some kind of, is that, there's some kind of accreditation to that or?
There's not. What we're looking for is someone with a college degree. And essentially, and there's been some flexibility now at the state level as well, but that was one of the requirements for folks. And really what you're asking is because they're able to cover classes independently. And so that's something that you're looking for as a requirement. The state's now opened that up so that we can, if someone maybe doesn't have that, there's other ways of us essentially being able to look for, you know, we call an emergency certification for that. It would be dependent on their background and perhaps some relevant experiences they've had with childcare, with children and working in those environments. But, you know, it's something that I know a lot of folks have pushed at the state level to try to look at some of those requirements and trying to find what's the right balance. You know, again, I think that's a piece we're always looking for. We want to open up doors for folks, but we also want to be mindful that, you know, we want to have qualified people sitting in classrooms.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? All right, to share the appreciation expressed. Thank you so much. And with that, we have a motion on the floor. Pardon me? Yes, Ethan.
So I'm going to abstain just because I think when we vote on these things, we should know how much we're doing. So it's nothing against the contract, it's just...
Understood. Again, I would feel very comfortable with it. $300,000 would be a very fair number. I could feel confident telling you. But I respect your position on that.
Thank you. So, and I hadn't asked for it before, so it's on me.
Before we vote, any other last comments or thoughts? Ethan, thank you for sharing your stance with how you will vote. All right, with that, with the motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now, moving on to staff communications and reports, and we shall receive our superintendent's report, passing it to Mr. Vicinus.
Thank you very much. I will be brief, but I have big news across the board. So I'm most excited to share this first news and I hope I'm not stealing any thunder. But Lorna and I were invited to be part of a press conference this morning at the Legislative Office Building during which both our Senate and our House leaders announced a very exciting bill to provide much-needed and greatly appreciated support for special education funding. In response to direct outreach to our delegation to the legislature in general across the state of Connecticut, this was not just West Hartford, but, and certainly in response to the community listening circles that I think you've heard about, the legislature announced that it will be adding $40 million to the excess cost reimbursement funding coming from state surplus. This action supports without question our most fragile learners. It ensures our ability to deliver on both a promise and a responsibility to provide a free and appropriate public education to our neediest learners. It will directly support students with needs related to specialized transportation, individualized services and tuition costs for out-of-district placements when students present with needs that are beyond what we can support in our building and district programs. And I am unquestionably grateful to the legislature for their attention to this. And I also thoroughly appreciate their commitment to ongoing work because this, as I think the statement was made, is a deposit toward a larger need. I think there's recognition out there in the community about the impact of some of the shortfalls and what it means relative to localized funding and certainly continues to be a driver for us and for districts across the state. So I can't say enough about my appreciation for their actions this week. Students kind of stole some of my thunder about some of the big stuff happening at Conard and Hall, not the least of which, it is February, it is Black History Month. They mentioned, and I'll just add a point of emphasis, the panel discussion in support of the 2025 Black History Month theme, African-Americans and Labor. So I'm very excited. I'm looking at Latoya. I know she's going to be a panel member on this joint Conard-Hall presentation as well as other community members. Very excited for the engagement of our community with our schools. Also sharing, when I send you a copy of my notes, there'll be a link to a video. As you know, at the elementary level, we have a system by which students will research a prominent African-American, their contributions across a range of different fields, sciences, politics, the arts. And the students will, you know, each grade level will have one area that changed, that theme, and they change the theme. So over the course of their elementary experience, they've gotten to investigate a series of six different individuals and benefit also from the research of the other classes. And there's a wonderful video that one of our elementary schools has done to kind of highlight this. So I'll share a link of that with you so that you can see that. I want to cycle back to some news that I brought up in late December. I think I mentioned that our pre-kindergarten program was being formally assessed by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, otherwise known as NIAC. They conducted site visits right before the holiday break, literally the day before the holiday break at Charter Oak, Webster Hill and Smith. Now, I don't know if you can recall what school was like on the day before the holiday break. But it can be somewhat hectic at times. And so we weren't necessarily so excited about the choice of date, but we had every confidence in our educators. And we were so excited to receive news last week of their score on the accreditation. And they earned an amazing score of 99.31% out of 100, nearly a perfect rating across 10 different standards and 53 different competencies. And they are just to be applauded for the amazing work that they do every single day. Absolutely. And I'm fairly certain if it wasn't the last day before break, they would have gotten a clean 100. I want to send a huge thanks out to the West Hartford Prevention Partnership and also the community of concern as well as staff from Conard and from Cedric Middle School, that their support for the recent viewing of Screenagers, which was hosted at Cedric Middle School last week. There were a total of 60 participants who learned about the importance of screen limits and the appropriate use of cell phone and social media. So just a few short announcements there. Pending your questions, other than that, we're kind of nose to the grindstone with budget preparations for March.
All right, Jason?
So no questions, but just a real thank you to you, Paul and your team, for jumping all over this, the hole that had been there in the excess cost grant. You today did a fantastic job representing West Hartford, as did our chair, who did just a wonderful, wonderful job. My most heartfelt thanks also to our delegation. And I hope people are watching because they should know how hard our legislative delegation worked to get this done. They led it every step of the way. I know they were responsive to all of us who reached out to them multiple times and also to others around the community who really brought this to everyone's attention.
Absolutely. Echo all of that. Thank you.
Other comments regarding, yes, Ethan?
Just a question and maybe too early because you just got the news today. We had a $1 million negative variance. Do you have any idea how much this would be?
So we're anticipating it to be about 1 point, just under 1.4 million. I believe Theresa corrected me, 1.36 was it? Now, that's using today's figures. There will be updates from statewide in March as to the actual costs. We've kind of submitted our projected costs, but as real costs come in, they'll use those updated figures. And they will be distributing the money in accordance with the formulas that they have. But there is a, there is an article that kind of outlines it. For every district in the state of Connecticut, you can look at what the anticipated outcome is. And then relative to us, just, you're absolutely correct that in our financial examiner's report, we were projecting a $1 million shortfall. And that was based kind of on taking every available cut that we had to make short of closing school and furloughing all of us a month earlier or something. So we will be able to, really be able to take a second look at that. We'll be able to, you know, postpone some of those cuts, maybe make them savings for this upcoming year should we get in excess of that million. But our total shortfall from the 85% that, you know, is, we're kind of banking on in terms of what's in the current, what's in the current law, our total shortfall was 2.6 million. So we were able to, and our shortfall from 100% was 3.7 million. So what we were able to do with where we had budgeted and finding other cuts, we were able to narrow that gap down to a million. So now we've got a little bit of breathing room from that should that come in somewhere close to 1.4. We anticipate 1.2, 1.4 at the end of the day is probably what we'll see.
I understand. So that was for this fiscal year? What does it say? Or is there any?
Excellent question. It is the open-ended question. How about next fiscal year? Because we know two years out, the governor has committed to $40 million, two years out. So what that really leaves us is the gap in the coming school year and...
Next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next school year, this coming school year, after this year's complete, 25-26.
That's still an unknown?
That is still... That is still an unknown. They commented about that today at the LOB. They, they, they were not able to commit anything. They wanted to allow for the budget process, you know, to carry through, but they did set an expectation and a hope that this could sort of be a new floor, I think, was, was the comment made. And, and really demonstrated an appreciation and understanding that, that this is a significant issue across the state of Connecticut.
Too bad you can't pocket some of the money for next year. Thank you.
Other comments, Claire?
Yeah, I had read that there was an additional 13 million to focus on reducing outplacement and finding ways to educate more students in-house rather than to private schools. Do you know much about that? And is, is that 13 million going to districts or?
I can't connect that, off the top of my head, I can't connect that 13 million specific figure. What I do know is that there is an effort, and I think this might be what you're referencing, to encourage school districts to look at regional solutions and alternatives to outplacement. I don't have the dollar value specific to know that. And I know that, you know, one of the things that we want to test within that is, my understanding is that's for new programs, and the question is what about if we were able to talk about the expansion or the enhancement of existing programs? Because that's one of the things that we've talked about here as a board quite a fair amount. We have a number of existing programs here in the district that we're extremely proud of that, that do all that they can do to keep our students here in district and not, not face house placements. And we would love the opportunity to be able to expand on those and to be able to receive some of that state support in order to do so. But we're unique from other districts, you know, relative to, say, our school engagement program or our intensive behavioral program or our post-secondary program. You know, those are just some of the programs that, that already exist here that other schools might say access, other districts might access that money to build and replicate something similar to what we have. Our ability to kind of create new alternatives and new ideas really become, I think they come with, with significant additional responsibility relative to like when, when we're outplacing, we're talking about residential therapeutic placements, medical placements, you know, things where the, the responsibilities are so far above and beyond our, our typical controls and our, and our, you know, that we're seeking outside professionals for that. So it's a great feature of the state, and we want to test it to see if there's a way for us to tap into it. But, you know, but we, we've got some really strong programs right now, so.
The other thing is the transportation cost is, is sometimes as much as the program. And so there has to be some kind of way to organize or streamline or do something because the fact that it might cost as much to bring a child to school as it is for the private school, there has to be some way to cut that.
I appreciate that point, 100%.
Other questions or comments regarding our superintendent's report? Yes, Latoya?
Yeah, just wanted to kind of second that, great work, you know, to you and Paul, Lorna, for representing us and our state delegation. And also, you wanted to again shout out Claire for going and testifying and also getting that interview with NPR. And I think it's just, it's really cool to see us all coming together and, and standing up for our kids and our families during a time where it's kind of tough. And so I also wanted to say, in the spirit of Black History Month, that we have an amazing equity inclusion coordinator in our town. And she's been organizing some really cool events in the town. I know there was just one last weekend, or two weekends, two weekends ago where they watched a documentary at the library and had a great discussion. So I definitely encourage people to go to the town website and look at how you can engage, get educated on black history. There's a lot of things that just aren't taught. I'm, I'm learning new things every day about our black, our beautiful black history. And so I think when we have these moments and these opportunities, we should take advantage of them and just make sure that we're informed and it's also a great way to show solidarity with the community. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I want to echo again what has been shared from our superintendent. Thank you so very much, the executive team, fellow colleagues, thank you for your advocacy. Certainly, yes, Claire, for you testifying. Certainly as well, want to thank our delegation, Senator Slapp, Representative Farrar, Representative Exum, and Representative Gilchrist for their ongoing advocacy and squeaking the wheel. But most importantly, want to thank those parents and those family members and those young people who went to those listening sessions, who spoke to their delegation and who advocated. And we want to have you to continue to do that because we're so fortunate for where we are now, but we know that we still may face challenges down the road. So please continue to advocate in that regard. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I also want to echo the importance, and thank you so much for recognizing the way our district is honoring Black History Month. But we know that Black History Month and black history is American history. And so that is something that we can recognize year-round because if it were not for the contributions of African-Americans, we would not be where we are. And so thank you so much for ensuring that we as a district uphold the policies and beliefs that we support and recognize for all of our students. And with that, we now shall proceed, and I see Mr. Doritaze there once again, to our staff reports and board discussions, where we shall receive our multi-year enrollment projections. Now, we know that typically, that's right, we did pause on that. And I was going to say, thank you. I wasn't going to say thank you, but I will say thank you now. And so now we shall receive your personnel actions. And so, Mr. Doritaze, passing it to you, please.
All right, thank, I definitely wasn't going to be able to answer those questions. I'm pleased to present our latest personnel report, which can be found on page 59 of your board packet for your review. As you know, I provide regular updates on any changes related to our certified staff, including teachers and administrators. Tonight, I will summarize these numbers reflecting all changes since my last personnel report in December. This month's report includes the following, two leave of absences and one retirement. We also hired four contracted teachers and six interim teachers. So, short and sweet, thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions regarding this information? Claire?
The special education hires, I know it's a very hard market to find teachers right now. And I just wanted to say that's great, that you've got three, and, and looks like they come in with some great experience.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, they're, they're all phenomenal hires. Again, I want to give kudos to Melissa Caballero and her team, who are also always out there. But I think it also speaks to the district and the reputation that we have across the state, that even hiring in December, we're able to have folks that want to be here. So again, kudos to the reputation that we have here and for some of the other decisions that the board makes and that we all make, that sometimes we don't necessarily feel, but I think these are the things where you see that come out.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Now moving on to routine matters, where we have approval of the minutes. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of February the 4th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya, but Ethan, appreciate your support as well. Discussion, any suggested edits? Seeing or hearing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Now moving on to information and reports. Board members, do we have any communication and reports that you would like to share? Or any other information or discussions? Seeing none, moving on to future business. Announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, March the 4th, 2025. Our regular Board of Education meeting, where we shall receive presentation of the superintendent's budget at 7 o'clock here in room 314, followed by Wednesday, March the 12th, 2025, Budget Workshop Number One at 7 o'clock here in room 314 at the Town Hall. Then again, on Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025, Regular Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock here at the Town Hall in room 314. And then again, Wednesday, March the 26th, Board of Education Public Hearing at 7 o'clock, followed by Budget Workshop Number Two, all of which take place here at the Town Hall in room 314. Do we have a request for any future agenda items? Claire?
Yeah, I just have a question about the budget workshops. Is it clear to the public which meetings are the best to go to or where we have the, the most opportunity for public comment?
So with that, and recognizing lots of activity in March, so thank you for raising the question. We do know that public comment is offered at every meeting. But with public hearing, that is specifically to discuss the budget process. We do know pieces are underway, and we'll have more to share at our next meeting, to offer additional opportunities to hear from the public regarding our budget process. We know that the squeak wheel gets the oil. We certainly have received insight from that from today's events. And we know with our budget process, we want to be able to ensure that we are hearing from all. So specifically to your question, the way it currently stands, Budget Workshop Number Two, which is following the public hearing, that is where a person can come to speak to the budget. However, the meetings where we offer public comment, they could also speak about the budget process at that time as well.
And I may send out a communication to the district just to reinforce that, just given the significance of the budget?
Yeah, because workshop might mean something to us, but I, I just feel like we need to bring the language down to something that your average person that doesn't know what a workshop is or what a hearing might be, just to get the language very layman.
Understood, well-received. And Superintendent Vicinus is nodding, so we will comply, yes, thank you, Claire. Any other comments or requests for future agenda items, that is? Seeing none, do we have any visitors who would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session, therefore seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ethan, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon, meeting adjourned at 8:40.